What's this?
That's my solutions.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah. Okay, waiting for Catherine. Do we have any ETA on Catherine? No, okay.
So that's what you get for living out there?
Yeah. Where do you, you get off, like, Bay Park?
Yeah. Uh huh. I got that for you, so I get to jump ahead.
Yeah. Well, I suppose we can get started and, because this is about asking questions. So, this continuation of our, of our budget discussion. The purpose this morning, ideally each of us on the board did some homework over the weekend and came with at least a draft of how we would balance the budget if we had to today. Tonight, the goal is to actually make decisions that get us to a, get us to a balanced budget. But this morning, the purpose is, I'm sure all of us as we went through our solutions, came up with a lot of, a lot of questions, even more questions than we had last week. So, the purpose today is to ask our questions so that they can inform the decisions that we make tonight. So, Superintendent, I don't know if you have anything to kick us off or if we should just begin with board member questions?
Yes, President Barrera, let me maybe provide some opening remarks and respond accordingly. What all of the board trustees should have, and cabinet members as well who are here around the dais, is the spreadsheet that has been depicted on the screen above and in Board Docs. Behind that should be all of the source documents, and the way we tried to present this so that the board can follow, if questions had followed, is that we've taken this spreadsheet and broken it down into groupings, starting at the very top with, here is the challenge as we know it, with the calculations of the 87.
Which of these PDF files is this? Which one of them? We got about seven.
It says revised 222.
Revised 22210?
Yes.
Okay. I just need to be on the same page because I have no hard, no paper. I have only this.
Okay. This spreadsheet is put together with essentially those PBB non-personnel related decisions are the first grouping halfway down page one. At that point, we begin to deal with programmatic recommendations or considerations for the board that do involve personnel, and we've tried to depict the impact FTE across the different categories on the right side. And as you proceed onto page two, we continue on with that discussion until we get to the point of member recommendations or member ideas, that's at the beginning of page three, and close that out with the last piece being negotiable considerations. The idea here, President Barrera, was simply to lay out for all of the trustees, the cabinet and community at large, here are ideas. We recognize that we need to balance our budget, we need to come up with a set of actions for the 87 million. Each of the cabinet members is either ready to respond or has a designated subject matter expert, and we actually, the way the source documents were put together, we talk about page one, line 12, or page two, line 15, as the case may be, so that a member of the cabinet can clarify. We recognize that some of the issues are more complicated because they may be organizational nature, such as dealing with the SIO organization or the IMC, but prepared to answer what we can in that regard, and let the conversation be open-ended and help shape the answer or your consideration in what we can.
Okay. That sounds great. So, why don't we actually then begin with questions? Who wants to go first?
I just have one question.
Yep.
I have several, but my book. But the one that we struggled with the most was the one about the special ed encroachment. It was the board's understanding that we wanted to maintain special ed as we have this year, but we found out in maintaining it, it would be an additional $15 million, and we wanted to understand why. And Mr. Fulter wasn't here, Dr. Fulter wasn't here Friday afternoon to explain to us why, but we would like to know why that encroachment is, if we want to maintain, we're saying we just want to maintain it, we don't want to cut it, we want to maintain it, then why is that different? Why is the 15 million there?
Would you like me to respond now?
Yes, please.
Sorry. I think you were notified a few weeks ago of the increase in the local contribution, the projected increase for the next school year. It's a result of a couple of things, actually more than a couple of things. You've already heard about the step and column increase, and I sent a memo to the board just yesterday that kind of documents and details what those increases are. The step and column generally on an average increases annually about six to seven million dollars. Now, on top of that, you have to include as well the variable and fixed benefits. There are some increases in those benefits as well. It's generally assumed with the step and column, and together, you're looking at about a $7 million increase. Now, the other piece which caught me off guard just lightly was the underestimation of the revenues. The rev, there was a decrease in our revenue limit, and that occurred just some weeks ago, I think maybe a week or so before you were notified. That was a big hit to the special ed department. It ended up being about a $5.8 million hit, so a close to a $6 million reduction in the revenues. So, together with the increase in the step and column, you have about a $13 million hole at that point. And then you have, in addition to those two items, some underestimation of the SERP forecast or the SERP results. Of course, a number of our staff took advantage of the SERP opportunity last year, and there was an underestimation of the results of that endeavor to the tune of about two or so million dollars. If you add all those together, of course, you, you get very close to the 15 million or so. Now, fortunately, I had a chance to spend some time with our budget analyst just yesterday. Actually, I've been spending time with this person almost daily. It looks like the second interim projections might be a little better than, than we, we had seen for the sec, this first interim, which, which means that we might have to make some, again, allowances or adjustments to what we had projected in terms of the local contribution once again. So, you know, that's, that's a general view of what took place to increase that local contribution.
All right. Follow up. Yeah. So, I guess the first question is, do you have a sense today of what that second interim estimate might look like, or when might we have a sense of that?
I, I don't have a sense, of course, those numbers and figures that we discussed were tentative.
Yeah.
Preliminary. I think the second interim will be presented in just a few short weeks.
Amy's pointing to a number here.
Right now, it's looking about a $4 million decrease.
$4 million decrease.
Yeah, preliminary analysis.
Okay. And then, the question of decreased revenues, this is one I'm still trying to get my head around, seems like the decreased revenues is a combination of two things. One is the decreased ADA for all students that we're projecting, but the second is a decreased number of students, number of special ed students. Is that correct, that the decreased revenue is a combination of those two factors?
Yeah, I, I think the first factor is certainly true. We have seen a decrease in the overall number of special ed students. It hasn't been as significant as, as what's been reported. It's probably at this point about a 200 to 300, 100, I'm so accustomed to dealing with numbers and dollars now.
Yeah.
200 to 300 student decrease from, from last year to this year. Now, the concern, of course, is how those students are coded. We've worked with our staff and, and I mean, the teachers who input the data in Encore, our IEP system. We've talked with the program managers, and Susan Martinez has been involved in these discussions as well. We need to make sure we're getting credit for, for all those kids in our program. I'm not certain that's happening now, and it could be because of a coding issue on, on our part. Now, the other piece, other piece that, that needs to be lifted, I, I feel, is, is that our non-public students. We have about 350 or so students in non-public schools. There are about 99 of them who may be coded inaccurately. Of course, that would make a difference in the overall ADA that's received for the district.
Okay. So, that question, because the, the basic question is, if we are, if we have fewer students, if that's the case, then, and that's part of the reason for a decrease in revenue, the logic would be that the general fund contribution would also decrease by that, you know, by a, by a comparable amount. Is that true, or is, so if we in the end have fewer students, would our general fund contribution decrease, putting aside all the step and column and all the other factors? Yeah.
Generally, that, that's true. What dictates a lot of spending in special ed, of course, is the maintenance of effort, and we need to spend typically on most years, up to 90% of what was spent in the previous or preceding year. Now, there are some allowances, and of course, a decrease in enrollment is, is one that you can, you can factor in.
So, the things that would lower would be decrease in enrollment, maintaining effort for 1,000 students instead of 1,100 students, just as an example. That seems like it would adjust it. And then, the other adjustment, even though you're talking about step and column and so forth, would be if we do end up with some sort of concession, payroll concessions, then that would also presumably reduce, lower the maintenance, I mean, maintain the same effort for less dollars.
That's generally true.
So, at what point, at what point, I guess is the question, can you guys come back to us with your, having factored all of these, you know, issues in, with your clearest sense, you know, at this point of what that increased contribution will have to be from the general fund?
It looks like right now, based on all the figures I'm seeing, and again, these are preliminary, but you can certainly read, well, I shouldn't say certainly, but it looks as though you'll be able to reduce at least
A four.
Four million from the 15, not four, is it four million? Four million, yes, from the 115 million.
And then, beyond that four, would there be additional analysis that you're doing right now that you might be able to come back to us and let us know how it factors in?
The additional analysis would be looking at how our students are coded.
Yeah.
Of course, and there were some recommendations for other options on, on the data that was
Yes, we're, we're putting those aside
Okay.
Because that's not, we're talking about the increase, not the, not cuts, but, so do you, so like the, looking at the codes?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a sense of when you might be able to come back to us with that?
I'm pretty certain we can, we can have that information within the month.
Richard, from my perspective, I haven't talked to Joe at this at all, so I'm not putting him on the spot, but my preference is we would try to finish that up before the second interim is completed.
Yeah.
That way, we can factor that into the second interim financial results, and we'll be glad to help Joe with that. If I need to have Mark Curtis sign to Joe for, you know, dedicated time of serious hours per week, I can go ahead and do that.
Okay.
The other thing that Joe was talking about is part of the dilemma on the step and column, when you saw that figure the other day, it wasn't just step and column, it was benefits like, variable benefits and fixed benefits. So, that's taxes and those kinds of things as well, or payroll taxes.
Yeah.
I think to get to a more precise number, we have to make sure the coding errors are cleaned up, and then we also have to make sure that our estimates for the second interim with Mark and Amy and Debbie are really clean and solid. So, I think we plan to present the second interim to you. My memory says March 9th, I think, so my goal is to, of course, have that to you the Friday before the Tuesday board meeting. So, and then, between now and then, we can give you updates, you know, on a frequent basis, if you like, as well. We've only got a few weeks left.
President Barrera, I'd like to get at that coding issue with some additional support, perhaps, and that's turned to Darrell. I don't know if there's an IT coding support to special ed, to finance, so that we can pin down that 300 and see what the dollar difference would be. I don't know, Darrell, if there's something you can intervene here as well.
We can, we can dedicate Ruth Turner, who, who focuses on the special ed portion enzangle, which is where the reporting ultimately comes from. It just needs to get, we just need the right information, and we can update the systems pretty quickly. So, once they've identified how they want to identify those students, we can get those codes in immediately.
Okay. It's not possible that it's something that we could have more information by 5 o'clock tonight?
Could ask some questions.
Could do the same, but I'm not sure you'll have all the information you need by, by that time.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thanks. I'm, I'm sorry, if we, if we have more questions, I'll
Yeah, same point.
Yeah, yeah.
Just trying, we're talking about the 100 versus the 115, and the maintenance of effort, and going up and down and so forth, and then, when we have our list of cuts, we have the 7.2. Okay. Just kind of explain to me how this all fits together.
Sure.
You know, and we're talking, we're talking about trying to minimize this $15 million increase on the one hand, due to all this maintenance of effort and other things, but then we have the 7.2 here. How does that figure in?
Well, it, it would certainly factor in, and that would lower the contribution even more, of course. If, if you'd like me to specify some of the areas that have been recommended by PBB as potential cuts, I, I can do that, but, but in, in general, it would have some effect on the local contribution.
But, okay, so the, the cuts that we're looking at here on this sheet, how does that figure into maintenance of effort? Because compared to other general ed programs, when we just say we're going to go in and cut, and then we have this other factor, we have to maintain effort, I'm trying to figure out how we combine or separate out these two.
One of the recommended PBB cuts is the Learning Center,
Uh huh.
Which would save about $2.3 million, based on my discussions with finance. That would be considered an item that's exempt from the MO because it's, what's, what's considered, again, a costly item that could be discontinued.
Uh huh.
So, it wouldn't be, you wouldn't take a hit necessarily against the MO as a result, result of that.
Okay. And
The other
The other part, yeah.
The, the other parts are, our department has determined, or not determined, but decided that we could start the next year without filling some of the vacancies that, that have been open for some time, as a result of the hiring freeze, of course. So, again, that contribution or that lowering of the salaries and benefits would make a difference in the overall contribution as, as well.
And that would also be exempt from the maintenance of effort calculation?
And, and this sense, it, it could be as a result of our slightly declining enrollment.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. DeBeck?
Yeah. Okay. Where is it? All right. Just talk, just for the Learning Centers alone. Kids go to Learning Centers. Are there any other programs in special ed that are on the, I'll call it chopping block that kids go to?
The Learning Center at this point is, is the only
Okay. Now then, how do you propose to fit the needs that the Learning Center was set up for in the first place? I mean, this, this is individualized instruction directed toward the kids' IEP, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, now then, you take that away when you recommend the cut. Now then, I'm a parent, I got an IEP, the kid's supposed to get these services, now you took them away. I'm not happy. I go for a hearing, I, I win the hearing, now what are you going to do?
Well, our, our intention, and I have Susan Martinez here to talk more about that, I, I think she's in, in the audience, but our intention is to serve those students at their home school, and Susan's been working with a team of individuals to
Okay, hold it. Just stop right there. Don't go any further
Sure.
Just because when you said home school, it got me already on it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. How can you take a program that concentrates kids into a place that provides them the services in their IP, and disperse it out to the schools and provide the same services at a lower cost?
I'll address that as soon as Susan gets a chance to share her, her thoughts on the Learning Center closure.
When the Learning Centers were developed about 10 years ago, we didn't have the wealth of knowledge and the support for reading in our, in our home schools. I've been working with Linda Golkey over the year, and Brenda Campbell, both are putting in reading interventions. We help support some of those reading interventions with our ERA money, and in talking with Brenda and other, in talking with Linda and others who are very knowledgeable about reading interventions, and looking at what is provided in the Learning Centers, we feel confident that we can build individual programs for those students at their campuses.
Then why are parents expressing a lack of confidence in that?
Because that, the Learning Center has been the only, it has been the answer to their problems, given that we were not focused on developing alternative suggestions.
Well, this is why I hate making decisions in the, in the heat of budget cuts, because while the professionals are all convinced, the parents aren't. And what happens then is the parents will start filing uniform complaints or doing whatever they feel is right, and probably, it'll cost us money anyway. I mean
Well, we
You know, so, so part of the, let's say that we believe as a, as an entity, and I don't want to say special ed, but just as an entity, that there is a reason, a real reason to transition from Learning Centers, that they really, it can be justified, not in an economic crisis, but in a regular time, then why weren't we building that confidence within our, our population before we ever got to this crisis? See? I mean, it's easy for me to say, okay, you know, I'll use my household, I'll, I'll cut out, oh, just for making it easy, I'll cut out the person that comes to clean the house twice a week, or twice a month, okay? And my wife says, what do you mean? Well, I'll help. What do you mean you'll help? You know? So, why didn't I start helping before I started cutting them out? So, the point of it is, you can't, or you can, you could do anything you want when you start, in an emergency, start to cut, but if, it's very difficult to get support from people that are, what they think is adversely affected when they haven't been part of the discussion about how their services are going to be improved, or their kids are going to get the same kind of services in a new environment. See, that's the point, I, see, I'm a person that's involved in public engagement. You guys are too, but if you miss on it, it doesn't come back to you, it comes to me. Okay? And the second round that they, when they ask me, well, what can I do? My answer is, find a uniform complaint. Because that's their right, and I can't deny them their rights. So, then the point is, why don't we do the groundwork first and build the capacity, build the understanding that we're going to improve every year. We're going to improve special ed in a way that has all the parents that are served on board, and we're becoming more efficient as a planned event rather than at a crisis event.
Yes, sir.
This is a crisis, and so what we're doing is we're saying, looking, I, I think we're casting about looking for ways to save money. I don't think it was part of the intent to do this in the first place, and I'm not blaming you guys, I mean, you have to do what you have to do. But, but for me, the issue is, I represent parents, I represent the community, and I need to know, not that the professionals have found it as a way to save money, but that it makes sense educationally for the kids. Because I've lived through a whole battery of, of times when this district was called down and actually had actions taken costing us more than a million dollars because we had neglected special ed kids. Well, I'm not going there. Okay? And I, and I don't blame the messenger, that's, that's not your fault.
It wasn't my fault.
But the issue is, we've got to have the people that are served understanding it, and they don't.
My question is, you know, and so we can move on, is, why is it there? I mean, the board was, the board's challenge was to maintain special ed, so why are you cutting special ed? And, and I keep saying over and over again, we're just now getting to the point that we're not getting all those uniform complaints, that we're not selling out of court, and it makes, you know, cuts would not be appropriate because we're going to end up paying more in settlements, so I'm not understanding why there's this cut in special ed. I mean, our question was, why was there a $15 million addition to your department? But, but, you know, for you to have cut 7 million, then that, you know, certainly raises concerns with, with me, and, and, you know, it's taken us two years, you know, and I know you're just coming on board, but it's taken us a number of years to get to the point that we're not paying millions out each year in, in suits, you know? And so, to turn around and go back to that, you know, does not feel good to say, I mean, we'll save 7 million this year, we pay out 14 million next year or more in order to, you know, settle, you know, out, because the people that were advocating, their kids are still in the school system. They're quiet because we were doing something, we had a plan, we had a strategy, and they was trusting us to do that strategy, implement that strategy. Now we turn around and say, we're not going to do it, we're going to change. I don't think they're going to just sit on the sidelines and say, oh, well, we understand the budget crisis. They're, they're not.
Even if we weren't in the midst of this crisis, at some point, we would have been looking at moving those services back to the home school. It's much more efficient.
Mm-hmm.
We think it could be done much more effectively. We have a number of students now, 84 students in our Learning Center, of course. It serves students district-wide, but they leave their sites for two to three hours a day to receive the support at a Learning Center at one of our three sites. Now, we think as a department, it, it makes perfect sense, especially in light, in light of our recent initiatives, and that is for students to attend their home school, and students to stay in their, hopefully in some general ed classes. But we think it makes perfect sense for those students to return to their home school and receive the same intensive reading support that they now travel hours to get elsewhere.
Okay, so for the big picture for me, just help me just a second. The big picture is, on one hand, they're saying it's a $15 million encroachment on the general ed budget. On your hand, you're saying you're cutting 7.2 million. Okay? So So in the big, in the big picture, are we saying that the encroachment then is only 8 million? Is that...
That's the problem I have too, how do you combine those numbers?
Is that the real, is that the final for special ed? Because it doesn't make sense to tell me, you're on this list to cut 7.2 million, but then you're on another list for me to give you 15 million. That, you know, that doesn't make sense. So maybe the other list should have said that your encroachment is 8 million, and 8 million because after everything is all said and done, you have eliminated 7 million. Does that make...
The encroachment remains 115 million. Now, the hope is that we can lower that through some of the, through some of the responses I mentioned earlier, through the coding issue being addressed, through an analysis, again, of the revenues, through some of the reductions that were mentioned. And I saw James over there nodding his head, I guess he wants to add something to this.
Thanks, Joe.
Well, I don't want to, I don't think you really meant encroachment.
General funding contribution.
General funding.
I want to get there, because I think we've got, we've got to understand as a school district, that the money we get from the feds or other sources for special ed is supplemental money for the kids, but the assumption is that the general ed is already supporting them. Okay? The difference is that because of the law, there are services that are being mandated that we're not getting enough money for, from the special ed contributions from outside sources. But to call it an encroachment is just a popular way of getting at, it costs you more than the services provide. But they were, the services, some of them were being provided before the law ever happened.
Well, I'm glad you caught that, because one other assumption that I wanted to raise and lift up quickly, we've been talking about merging and aligning our systems, and there's an assumption out there that special ed costs are siphoning cost off the general education budget. And I think it's important that we all remember that special ed is a part of education, and those monies are, the kids are just as entitled to those monies as any other student in the...
Well, they could have passed idea without funding it, and we'd still be stuck with it.
Exactly. James, you want to...
Yeah. The contribution amount is factored in based on what happens to our revenue limit, and then the other revenues that we get for special education. Keep in mind, the other issue we have is that we've taken a large cut in our revenue limit per ADA amount. We should be getting about $6,300, $6,400. And based on what the state did to us this year, and ongoing for next year and the years to follow, that drops it down to about $4,500. So some of the problems that are happening in special ed from a funding perspective is due to the fact that we actually got our revenue limit amount reduced. Because it's reduced, then that has a little bit of a factoring that causes the contribution amount to be a little bit higher because you get less revenue. So the costs haven't per se essentially been reduced or lessened. It's really impacting special ed, just like any other general education program, because part of the funding via the contribution amount comes from the revenue limit dollar amount. And then the other question, the other statement I was going to say is that, the 115 is factored in with what we had in our first interim amounts. At that point in time, we didn't have the $7 million of items that we could say we're going to reduce out of the system, because the board hasn't taken any action on that. So until, if the board would take action, then I could show in our system that we reduce special education expenses by about that dollar amount. Until you folks take that in my first interim, I couldn't reflect that.
Okay. This is, this is where I think we're kind of separating, okay? Let's start from the beginning. You start out with a general ed fund, I don't care what it is, big, little, whatever, it's a flat amount that every kid gets, special ed or not. Then there's a federal law passed that says, you got to provide these services, and it, and we're going to send you some money too. Not enough, but we'll send you some money. So then, we now are facing a crisis in our budget. And we're laying off because of the general ed contribution being dropped, which is for every special ed kid, along with the regular ed kids. We're asking special ed to contribute too. Well, it's not, it's not the special ed kids' fault that the general dollars dropped, but they ought to be affected only in the general ed side. And yet, we've decided that, and I don't agree, and I yet have seen the cost accounting that goes with, if you take the services you provide in a center, and disperse them out to the sites, that they're going to be cheaper. They're going to be lowered if they're cheaper. They're not going to be the same service as the kid got. So, you know, and Joe and I could argue this a long time. But the point I'm getting at is, it does not make any sense to anybody that I know in the community that doesn't have even a clue about education, that you can take and provide centralized services and disperse them, and it'll create an economy. It can't. It's like making every, every neighborhood corner have a service station means you could sell more gas, or you'll be, it'll be more efficient for the, for the community, for the gas companies to have one at every corner? You can't. There's overhead for every single one of these spread out operations, or you have to give up something, like the people that pump your gas, or like the, you know, the air, or the water, or whatever you do, so you got to pay for it. I honestly don't believe that they, even though I know that the idea of least restrictive environment means you send the kids out, I think we're at a tension point where maybe, if we're talking about economies, we ought to actually think about and do some cost accounting about whether centers are a more effective way to deliver special ed than dispersing them, even though the law doesn't agree with it.
Yeah, I think...
And I'll just use a simple example. Let's say you've got 50 deaf kids, I mean profoundly deaf, I'm not talking hard of hearing, profoundly deaf kids in this school district, in a given grade. Is it more efficient and better services for those kids to get that in every elementary school they're in, or to bring them all together and to have a single teacher or a couple of teachers that have the talent to reach those kids? It's a no-brainer, that having them in together is a better way to provide highly qualified services for those kids.
Mr. Kova?
Just a couple of comments. I would agree with what Mr. DeBak said about the seriously hearing impaired. In fact, that's why we have the Lindbergh-Schweitzer type facilities, because those are unique standalone facilities for communicating with children based on lighting and alarm systems and so on. However, I do think that even though this is a crisis, we are looking for ways to accommodate cost. And what I think Mr. Foltzer has identified is, he thinks we could complement both homeschooling and some positive factors for the children with the learning centers. Now, would it recognize that decentralization doesn't always give you a cheaper, more effective way to do business, or a reasonable way? But there are issues of children, transportation time, transportation costs versus having them on their own campus. And this is an item that he had been looking at independent of the crisis, but I think the crisis compounds it. So I just want to make that as a note. And I do think, from what Mr. Macias was telling you, is you do have some puts and takes, based on the calculation for the second interim about the maintenance of effort, that does impact on the $15 million differential. You overlay that with any decisions you make about programs with special ed, that has another factoring in. And I think what the cabinet was trying to do was just look for those different opportunities for the board.
So the only question, the other question I had on line 23, so you talk about the elimination of the learning centers as a $2.3 million savings, but then you talk about, for instance, the five certificated FT and 75 para educator FT vacant positions will not be filled. What's the estimate of the cost savings from not filling those vacant positions?
Amy, I'm looking at you. I'm wondering if you have that, that information readily available.
Well, it's 75 times the average cost of a para, which, you know, which I could probably assume would be at least 30 grand.
The 4.8, but that includes the reducing five school psychologists, one clerical admin, one supervising classified, five education specialists. So if you guys could get us that breakdown of, just, just, just the not filling the vacant positions, what that, what that is.
1,500,000.
Amen.
Thank you.
1,500,000. Let them tell you.
Okay.
There's also about at least $10,000 of benefits.
Oh, I did that.
Yeah. Yeah, it's hard to find 4.8 in there.
50 grand?
So the problem I'm trying to come up with is, in terms of the special ed budget, is dealing with these potential cuts that might be exempted from maintenance of effort, and then looking at the 15 million and the ways that we might be able to reduce that. And from a budget standpoint, we kind of need to combine, I was combining those two and coming up with 9 million in savings. But we're kind of adding an unknown variable to a specified variable, and then I came up with a specific number, because I'm saying, somewhere out of the 15 million, maybe besides the step and column, up to 9 million, and maybe somewhere between 0 and 9, added to 7.2. And then I put down the number of 9, which actually seems fairly conservative between those two numbers. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
So, Amy, how close was I?
Oh, I'm saying...
So, so I'm not sure, from a approving a budget point of view, how we do this, because this, how much we can reduce that 15 million is unknown. This cut is very specific, and how do we add those two together? If, you know, I would just like to say, okay, let's, let's find 9 million between the two of those.
Some of the dollar amounts that were budgeted, also, that, the number you're looking at is the net number, because some of those monies went to the school sites to continue the service delivery. So that's why you're seeing, you're not seeing the full amount there, because some dollars actually got pushed to the school sites in the proposal.
Right. The services were not eliminated, they were just changed and replaced, and it's the net savings. Right?
Okay. Okay. If there are no more questions about special ed, we'll move on to additional questions.
Yeah, I have a question on, on the SIO ISS consolidation, just for us to go over that briefly. I, at one point, had on my list between the SIO...
John, line 25, just to reference where you are.
Okay, yes, line 25. Okay. A and B, right. So this comes out to 3.2 something, whereas previously we had 2.5. Okay, so that's gone up. So, I mean, I understand basically the idea between B and C, which are almost identical in terms of savings, right? Is that the B option is a K to 12 alignment, and the C option is dividing up between program improvement and not program improvement, correct? And in terms of option B, my concern was not so much the aligning of the sub-districts as the board members are elected, and, I mean, that's one way to do it in terms of the five, but it was mainly, the main idea that I have is for a K to 12 alignment, that at least all the clusters be intact. And so if the cluster, I'm just saying, the point I'm making is, as long as the clusters are intact, I'm fine with it. If it works out, doing it by sub-districts, okay, but if it divides up sub-districts, that's okay, if there's some, if there's some logic behind it. Because I know all sub-districts don't have the same number of schools and so forth. And again, I don't think we need to pay attention to board members' districts as much as keeping clusters intact.
Dr. Evans, I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Right.
On the 1 dot 1 that you see there, the 2 dot 1 and the 2 dot 2, those are all standalone?
You're right. Okay, that's why I was coming up with the problem.
Those aren't, those aren't to be combined.
Right. Okay, so it's 2.1, whereas before we had 1.1 and 1.3, so it was a little bit, it's gone down a little bit, but okay. So, I mean, I don't know if the other board members see it the same way.
I have other questions, certainly.
About this issue?
Well, on that topic, I support K-12. I have all eyes.
Well, the, I think the original intent maybe, for me, was not just a consolidation of the SIOs and the instructional support, but the bigger picture from the district viewpoint. That is, everything that encompasses staff development and site overseeing a site is consolidated and streamlined, so that it flows together. So that would include having some part of, because IT has separate PD, you have separate PD from federal programs, you have separate PD from gate, and so the gist of it, and certainly this is to me at the beginning, but the conversation is, what would a reorganized, trimmed-down central office look like to be effective? And I didn't want to necessarily piecemeal it with just two departments over here and two departments over here, because the question is still the same. What you, what we hopefully want to do is, we say that we want to, as a board, send out more things to our clusters, we need to have the things at the central office streamlined. And I think we had some conversations yesterday when we met over with the charter leadership as to how that might look. But, so, I'm not, I want to see more than two departments combined. I want to see a conversation that looks at the entire picture of services going to the school, and how do we make that all fit together? And so I think that's, if I'm saying that correctly, that was more of the vision for, because looking at our 2020 vision, and I think that that piece was not necessarily captured here. But maybe it's because we were trying to rush, and we just said, you know, these two things, but it should have been a more, to me, a more global look at all of, all of those things. Because we cannot afford to have any one area just still out there by themselves. That means Ron Rody should have been at the table discussing his data, his role in it, so that everybody's very clear as to, you know, who we need to have here. When people from our cluster of sites call, then they know who we have here, and not just, you know, we, not the same district, we can't afford to be the same district.
Any comment to Ms. Jackson's?
I know, and just to share a few things. If you look at option B, let's just look at option B, that is the K-12 option. If you'll look at, and then see it, Nellie and Tony, feel free to jump in, you see a content lead teacher listed, on the actual organizational chart. Line 25B, page 2. If you see, or look at the content lead teacher, what we've done this year is try, to try to bring all of the professional development in, although you say, you know, IT is providing their own professional development. Everything actually goes through the instructional support services department. So Kim Hall and her team are working to provide that professional development, along with Daryl's team, in reference to I-21 and other pieces. Federal program is also teamed up with special ed. So everything is still centralized, you don't see it laid out here, but from my understanding, that was the reason for the content lead teacher being here. That person would be responsible with this particular option of pulling all the PDs together, and then ensuring that it got out to those different school sites in the different clusters or the school communities. Do you want to add anything?
I'm a little slow, but which one is which here?
It's this one here.
I have more?
It's a white, a white one.
Ah, here it is.
Okay, what is this? Okay.
He looked down the middle there. He says, content lead teacher.
What are the options, A, are there options that I didn't get?
A is current.
Do you have copies of all of those?
I don't have them.
They're in your brown folder.
In my brown folder.
Can I ask, does, does option A, B, or C, does that have any, how does that affect curriculum and instruction? I mean, is there any, because I know that we've been talking about that as well, consolidating the ISS in curriculum and instruction.
First of all, B definitely eliminates the executive director position, and eliminates several of the other director positions within the current ISS structure. If you look down on option B in the actual Merit tab, it tells you that it eliminates nine managers, 10 certificated, and five classified staff. Within those 10, nine managers, excuse me, there are school improvement officers, as well as managers or directors within the ISS program.
I can also say that on, on all three of the forms, that the curriculum department remains as a standalone that is coordinated through the school supervisors. And the discussion centered around the fact that the number of school supervisors was cut in half, and it was similar to the span of control for a... cut in half and it was similar to the span of control for a school classroom, approximately 30-plus schools to one.
President Barrera, can I ask a clarifying question for me from Ms. Jackson? So, I think what I heard is, on the FBS side, one of the things that we did is the reorganization structure was kind of a baseline and then there's been a couple iterations and the iterations that I've taken into effect has been based on feedback from my customers, so like school sites, department heads, those kinds of things. And what we tried to do in the FBS reorganization is, as much as we could, provide different and better services, but also bring supporting systems and applications to help us based on the fact that we've had a large excess of employees that have left the business for retirements or previous reductions in the past couple of years. So, I know from my perspective in reorganizing that department, it's, you know, multiple departments, one of the key benefits has been centralized purchasing now. So, now we actually have the ability to improve better financial resources. So, when you want us to do this, are you saying that you want us to take a look back between now and 5 o'clock to see what we could do? Or is this a step, or is this an ongoing process that you, that you want, Ms. Jackson? I'm just trying to get clear in my mind so you know what we need to do.
I'm thinking ongoing, or you can't do it before 5 o'clock this afternoon, but it's a shifting of the mindset and that is that in order for us to not only survive but to move forward, we have to be very efficient. And so, I know in the documents before I pointed out, I said that this department is uniquely different. Well, there's nothing uniquely different in our district. We all work together, no one, no department in this district is by itself. So, therefore, we have to be able to look at how we can streamline and people work together. And I know when we were fat, it was okay to say, let's have a standalone department here, department here, department here. We're no longer fat, we all know that, but now we have those departments. And I think the guidance was not just, so, I mean, I'm seeing this instructional support and the SIOs, but they're not the only ones that touch schools. And so, my concern was the fact that, and I think last year brought this up, is that principals get called from, you know, from AP people, they get called from the gate people, from the BAPA people, from the SIOs, from the ISS department. And so, we're, you know, hammering them about doing the right thing by, at school sites, but they're getting all these phone calls, getting pulled off campuses for various reasons. And our role appears to be to streamline that. So, they don't have to call all those people, okay? But what happened here is that that was taken and it's just the SIOs and ISS. But I'm saying, all of those departments, including federal programs, including Ron Rody's department, including everyone that people are calling on these school campuses, need to be put together in a nice package that flows. And that will save us money.
Sure.
It'll be efficient and it'll save us money.
It's Nakamura, it's not a chance to give you.
Yeah, I think that, you know, 25B makes probably the most sense. I agree with Dr. Evans on the alignment, that it's absolutely not critical that it be board member driven. In fact, I think that that's an anathema, it should absolutely not be board member district driven, we're not monarchs up here. So, you know, it has to be in the best interests of the kids. And I think also the logical flow is the cluster organization, you know, for better or worse. You know, I just came back and I want to apologize for arriving late. I was up in Sacramento with PE teachers, excuse me, PE teachers, PTA parents. I'm not tired, so, but with PTA parents, meeting with legislators and came back late last night, worked on the budget and then started working on it again this morning. I lost track of time, so I apologize for being late to everyone here. But the, you know, I agree that the 25B, and you've all done remarkable amount of work on this already, I think it makes an awful lot of sense. It's not maybe optimum from the point of view of what we actually need, none of this is, but I agree that in terms of cluster, it's something that people can understand and, you know, it ought to flow that way. So, I do want to thank you for all the effort that's gone into this. It's taken entrenched bureaucracy and reorganizing it is not the easiest thing in the world. We've all done things a certain way, a certain, for a long time, and I appreciate the way you've all rethought it. But 25B makes the most sense to me and I would keep the interests of the schools and first and foremost, and not the individual board members.
Just one- Dr. Evans, then, Mr. Deback.
Just one clarification here on the chart with, obviously, reduced the number of SIOs by, you know, that we have listed here as the area superintendents. The listed below that are the four resource teachers for each one. I'm just curious, I mean, where do they come from or why that particular number? I mean, we're looking at, you know, really streamlining, I mean, not streamlining, but we just have bare bones in terms of the number of resource teachers in general in the district. I'm assuming that's related to the professional development part along with the area superintendent, but is that taking the resource teachers from another area and keeping the same number of them, is it reducing the number? When things get moved around, it's hard to know. For example, why isn't it only two or 10? Or how is, why is it four?
There was a reduction of 20, 10 certificated teachers or resource teachers that were-
Reduction of?
10.
10.
So, we had 25 to place, we placed four under each one of the area superintendents and then declared one to be a content lead teacher.
So, if there's 24 here, there are 24.
Plus the content lead teacher.
Okay. And then before, there were 10 more than that.
And there are one for each of the core area contents in each area, English, social studies, history, and math.
Hmm, okay. Interesting.
Makes sense.
It looks good. Thank you.
Mr. Deback, if you want to comment on this?
Okay. Any other comments on these lines, 25?
Well, you know, on 25B, I support it. Okay, that's all I mean.
Okay.
Do we have consensus on 25B?
Yes.
Sounds like it, yeah.
Okay. So, we just saved ourselves some money.
Except, the money amount can stay, but I think that the cluster idea has to be taken into effect and so you're going to have to identify those clusters.
Right. And I, for example, it makes sense to put Merrimason's scripts ramps together, that's fine.
Well, clusters are, clusters are basically based on the size of the cluster. For example, the Point Loma cluster's got a whole lot of kids. If you put the Mission Bay cluster and the La Jolla cluster together, that's almost the same, but not, it's still not the same size. So, we could do it by population, student population is the best one.
Yeah, you've already done it. You've already broken down.
We have some drafts from last year when we were working on the cluster assignment. So, we do have some drafts that we can bring forward at a later time to present.
So, as long as it's cluster and not worrying about which board district.
District EA, yeah, right.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah. Don't mean to belabor the point, but this is a look at the academic configuration to clusters. I think I heard from Ms. Jackson a larger question about the rest of the organization. I think we'll get there. It will be incrementally, have ideas, but I think for the moment in time, we just wanted to focus on the academic piece for now.
You're talking about line authority, not necessarily academic, right? Because academic would be the instructional content.
Right, right.
Okay, but you're not talking about instructional content, you're talking about supervision of the schools.
This is instructional content as well.
That's not academic, that's management.
This is, this is instructional content as well, this model.
Well, it does say, does it?
This is, this is combining the SIOs and instructional support, so this is content as well.
Okay, you mean to tell me that the language arts are included and the sciences included?
Yes.
And that each cluster will have its own, or will they be centrally, I don't see that.
That's-
How could that be efficient? If you've got, let's say, district-wide, you have a single science authority, okay? And now you have, let's say, five science authorities. How could that be more effective? How could it be that there would be five people with equal skills and knowledge of the curriculum and that they would be needed full-time when their services would be requested as needed by, and how would you have coordination of the content of the science district-wide if you didn't have a central point of contact?
One model, the B one that you all chose, has a central person who is the designated coordinator and then they have the satellite people, if you will, and they coordinate with them to-
That's assuming that they need to be there full-time. And in a point of a financial crisis, I don't agree. Because see, like, those people would be like 80 grand apiece minimum and probably 90. And so, then, now you've got five times 90 instead of a single person. Personally, I think the single person, being an authority as a resource, would be better than taking that person away at whatever, 100 grand, and then multiplying them by five at 80 grand apiece doesn't see a saving to me. You know, unless I'm not good at math or I can't understand stuff, I'm trying to figure out how you can multiply and get less.
I think one of the things that's happening is that because we're doing our budget reduction as we did with special ed and people are doing some tweaking or changing of departments, we're trying to do that while we're doing the budget and it's, I think it's a bit, a bit much. We need, you know, we need to know what the savings is and so what I, what I could, maybe in my mind, what I could look here and say is that, okay, you're saying that we could save between about 3.7 million dollars for those, combining those two categories. What I feel, right?
That's unrestricted and restricted, yes.
Okay, all right. So, but my point was going to be that I could, I could say, I could agree with a savings of $3 million from those departments and the reconfiguration has to come back to us, okay? That I could live with because there are lots of questions about this and I still have more questions about this as well. And I think that the things that we're changing need to be presented to the board members at a time that you can go through what you're doing and how it's going to be more effective and to, right, because right now we're looking at the numbers. And so, I don't know, the other board member, if we could say, you know, we could agree that these two combined, you know, will yield us X amount of savings, then let's just take that number and then present this to us because Ms. Deback's question and other questions that come up and say, well, what about this, what about, because we haven't had time to go through and so it's asking the what ifs. And you may have answers, but we don't have the time today to ask you all of those what ifs either. And so, we need to focus on getting this budget balance. And once that's done, we can come back and say, okay, what does the new streamlined special department look like? What does the new streamlined central office support for the schools look like? Would make better sense to me.
And we appreciate going forward now with this model and we can work on doing what you're requesting.
Okay. So, to move on then, additional questions. I had a question about line 54.
Okay. How do we get all that out here?
So, line 54, I had put this on the table a couple weeks ago and what I was asking for was, in addition to all of the recommended savings from the priority-based budget process, could we then go into, you know, very bluntly, the different departments and knock off another 5% on top of that? That was the question. And, and so, and I understand that the, you know, that the answer, the answer to that question is no, but there's a big, you know, range between 0 and 5.9. And I want to have a sense of what's incorporated into the 5.9. Yeah, Mr. Deback?
President Barrera, I had Drew Rollins and Sandra Huaso look at that, in fact, collect individual inputs from each of the departments. So, let us take a moment and ask if they would comment in that area and give you some specifics.
I think what Richard is pointing out is that if you, and you are answering probably the wrong question. The question was, can we find 5% cuts in central office, not can we take 5% across the board? Because-
Correct.
There might be elimination of entire departments or combination of entire departments, which would result in a savings.
Yes.
So, I understand the defensive answer, I don't answer the, I don't understand, I don't think you got the question in the first place. And so, the question is, can there be deeper cuts in the central office that will result in a 5% saving?
Fair enough.
Not will you take across the board 5% savings? Yes, it's true. Sometimes the cuts will mean an entire department goes. Now, I'm not going to go all into that, but over my career, I have seen the time when we had similar problems in budgets and I've also seen people defend, I'll call it, and I can't get at the given departments, I'm not going to get there, teacher training or in-service training as being vital. I don't think it's vital when you've got a crisis like we do. You know, if you look at a tracing amount of money, I can remember a peak of $250 million that district spent during my career on staff development. Now, that was in the past and the results should be already in front of us in terms of student performance, but I don't know that that's true. So, then, when we constantly sit around saying, okay, we got to do this, we got to do this, until we have a way of identifying the effect of that on student achievement, I'm not sure we're there. So, every time you get into staff development, I'm saying, that's nice when you've got the money, but I'm not sure it's right now. If you believe that teachers are professionals, and I do, then even if you don't provide them for pay for professional development, they will seek it out themselves. And so, when we get into this arena of what do you do or how do you cut, you know, sure, I was a part, I even provided staff development when I was a teacher. But the point is, is it, did it result in generally immediate improvement or is it something you could afford in a time of crisis? I'm not sure of that.
Okay. So, I want to get, and I appreciate the better framing of that question, sort of that, but I want to get, and I understand that part of that 5.9 is, you came, in this spreadsheet, you have additional savings that you've identified from the original priority-based budget, correct? So, some of that's incorporated in here. So, but is there, so that's the question. Between the 0 and the 5.9, is there anything more there?
Well, I think the 5.9 was just the 5% of the cost of the whole thing.
I don't think so.
That's not what you were asking about.
But I think you had it, so I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sure. Just to point out, one of the things that we did do in terms of soliciting the information from the different divisions, we did indicate an additional 5% from each of the divisions. And then in turn, they were gathering information within the departments that report to them. The spreadsheet that you have in terms of your documentation, it kind of indicates what the impact would be, not only in terms of the FTE, but also there were some indications that money could be reduced that does not impact personnel. However, there was a conversation with regards to the duplicity of some things that were already being provided for as part of PBB or as part of BRAF. One of the things that, for example, that is before you, is the consideration of elimination or consolidation of BITSA, the intern programs and teacher prep. But part of that recommendation also includes of transferring those services to human resources. So, when I take a look at my department with regards to giving up an additional 5%, that means that I'm reducing six staff members. So, that's part of the whole conversation that needs to be had in terms of what would be the true impact to being able to provide the service if other recommendations are intercepted. The other example would be that, for example, in IT, they were looking at their 5% to include a .75 IT person that is also providing service in another department. So, there are impacts to be had with regards to one department providing a cut in one area impacting service in another. And one of the things that we would also consider is, for example, in auxiliary services, and Drew, maybe you want to speak to that, what areas you could actually tap into to be able to provide additional savings, but it really gets into the impact of what services we will be able to provide and how realistic that truly will be in providing our true savings.
I think if I could add, as we work through this, I think one of the things that we encountered and we did, as Sandra mentioned, you know, went and taxed everyone a 5% and said, what would this do to you? With so many initiatives also going on, it got a little confused. And particularly, there was overlap when we look at the beginning of the spreadsheet when we talked about a hiring freeze and spending freeze controls going into next year. Are we double counting any savings? So, that was certainly one of the concerns. However, there is, there is a number, as you mentioned, somewhere between 0 and 5.9 and 5.9 was a calculation of the 120-plus departments, again, moving across that. There were a few areas, for example, software license- There were a few areas, for example, software licensing. You know, we, we kinda took the assumption we have to pay for that and, and if we were to go to Darrell's department and take that five percent, it wasn't going to work. So we backed, backed that figure out and actually in the calculation here is a lesser number for Darrell's group based on the assumption that we would pay software licenses next year. We show that, again, the notional response was somewhere about a forty percent reduction. However, again, there's, our, certainly our hesitation and concern was there was a lot of overlap with the other initiatives in here.
So I guess let me, let me ask the question again. The, we've got a line on here, line fifty-four, five point nine, which represents, you know, if you took all departments and cut them by five percent, that's what the five, and Mr. DeBeck asked the question in a better way, I agree. The question though is, beyond everything else in this spreadsheet, are there additional savings that can be realized from cuts in the central office? I guess that's, that's really the question. Yeah, Mr. Silver?
Well, the, if you would look at, at line fifty-four, page two, in your backup doc, in the backup documentation, the five point nine million does not represent a five percent reduction across the board. It resembles, it represents, this, this is the chart I think you may not be focused on. It's line fifty-four, page two. It has, it has the breakdown by FTE and by department of the, I think what you're asking for, the additional, the additional central office cuts that are not duplicative, that are not found in other, other cuts and reductions. Do you see?
Yeah.
It goes down department by department.
I think, I think Drew, you need to chime in here.
No, I, I, this is really just, this is notional, but certainly there is concern that there is overlap there. This is, again, if we went to a department and said, if you have to take five percent after PBB, after BRACE, what would the impact be? Again, we had some places that said, I can absorb it and I can, you know, I can limit this or that. We had others, for example, utilities management, I would have to eliminate the entire group to get five percent out of those cuts.
I got analogy for what we're doing, it feels to me like I'm trying to catch feathers in a hurricane. You know, we go from piece to piece to piece to piece, we never even resolve the software stuff. And I, I honestly believe that we've got, we, we basically are sitting here with data that's useless, but anyway, let me just get to the idea of software. I gotta get at the software alone. If we've got a system that has software required for the operation of a department, then it shouldn't be charged to Darrell, it should be charged to the department. I mean, cost accounting says the operational cost of a department should be not borne by another department. Okay, if we have student information and it's data system, which, which may be run by him, it should, the cost of that should not be on Darrell's department, but spread out over those people who use it. It should not be, yeah, cause then we could, when you start making decisions like this, you make, they're completely wrong. You know, I mean-
I respectfully disagree, Mr. DeBeck. I really do.
John, fix me here if you're wrong, if I'm wrong, Darrell, but one of the things we did with Darrell is, part of the issue that we had was being able to make sure that we had accounted for all the different license agreements we had across the district.
Exactly.
And because we've been moving over the past eighteen months trying to balance our deficit, one of the things that we decided as a management team is to centralize as much of that we can under the direction of Darrell.
You're missing my point. I'm not saying that he shouldn't manage the software, I think the cost should be spread out over the departments that use it. Because it would be very easy for us to say, cut his program because it looks like it's a lot of money, when in fact he's supporting all these other people. See, it's an operational question.
At that point in time, John, I'd have to essentially build a cost recovery rate and Darrell could be perceived as a, as a revenue generator because then I'd have to, I'd have to charge every department overhead rate and saying, I'm gonna recoup my dollar amount from back to that. So that's one of the reasons why we didn't do that, because we've heard from you clearly, we're not supposed to be charging our school sites.
Okay, can I, I really wanna, I wanna-
I just don't agree with the-
I'm trying to figure out, is there anything here that's worth us thinking about?
Apparently not.
That was the best crazy, that was the best crazy in the question so far.
If the answer that you're coming back to us is no, then tell us, but, but so for instance, on this chart, it's up, this line fifty-four, page two, that's up on the screen.
Yeah.
We have chief elementary school improvement, office, additional reduction, a hundred ten thousand dollars, impact on people, zero. Secondary, a hundred eighteen thousand, impact on people, zero. Deputy superintendent, seven hundred seventy-eight thousand, impact on people, zero. Are those savings in addition to the consolidation, option B, that we just talked about?
That is the question. But I, I have to ask, I'm sorry, but impact, I'd like another column. Impact, impact on ability to do the job, ability to deliver services, ability to function, you know?
And I agree, but I'm trying to get, what, what are these numbers? What do they represent? Are they, are they cost savings in addition to option B? And if so, what do they need? And that's, you know-
Yeah, I mean, are we gonna cripple the, is that department gonna be crippled? You know, beyond-
President Brouwer, I can, if you look at the sheet that Cheryl's got of, I'm not sure what sheet you, you're looking at, but the one on, so if you look at the line item that says finance and budget for us, one of the things that I didn't include were any of the funds that we just managed for, like our bond redemption fund, we can't touch that, insurance fund, stuff like that. That is actually ten people, that ten dot O right there, for one point two million dollars. That, that will impact service level, from my perspective.
So I'm not asking about the, and I appreciate you, James, but I'm not asking about finance and budget, cause I see that minus ten and I assume that impacts, you know, service levels. But with those three that I just identified, what, the two questions, what, is it savings on top of option B, number one, and number two, what impact does it have?
There's, you have a lot of overlap with the different scenarios that you've got on the spreadsheet. You can see at the top of this spreadsheet, you've got your spending freeze, your hiring freeze, you've got this additional five percent here, and then you've got the reorg. So you have a lot of overlap in all these scenarios and depending on what decisions are made, the dollars that are on the spreadsheet are gonna go down because then the takeaway after this exercise is to pick out that stuff that is duplicated between the different, what if we did this, what if we did that? Honestly, there's overlap all up and down the spreadsheet.
I can speak specifically to the difference between the offices and, and option B. We looked at the non-personnel money, all of the supply, all of it, and took that out of the proposed budget as it stands prior to the consolidation.
Prior to the consolidation.
Prior to the consolidation with the current structure.
If I may add, with regards to the other impact, not necessarily to what model you select, but one of, some of the information that we received was that this money, that this additional five percent would impact also the hardware and the software and replacement of equipment, because most of these departments were taking a look at, can they avoid doing this additional five percent without impacting the FTE? And in most cases it wasn't. We're at the point that everybody is impacting the people part of it as much as they were looking at any non-personnel related materials. So this additional five percent, we do have impact statements and most across the board, there is an indication that service would be impacted at different levels.
All right, I'm done with that.
Just a quick clarification. If you'll notice the title, the title on the second column there, it says proposed ten eleven budget unrestricted, post PBB.
Yes.
So the, the identified budget areas that were, show reductions are those that we have projected as being the ten eleven budget after all the PBB cuts are taken. Now what may, where it, it may get a little fuzzy is in the broad-based categories such as spending freeze, you know, personnel cuts, we would have to scrub to make sure that that's not duplicated, but these are not reductions in addition to PBB because that column, those budgets, are the budgets that are, are projected after, assuming you approve the PBB cuts.
Okay, I have an issue here, which I just found two and a half million dollars under my desk. If the board has the stomach for it, and it's related to when, when Mr. Brouwer's trying to, you know, go down in terms of is there any more? We're, we're cutting back and we're going down to bare bones. I like what Mr. DeBeck said about, it's great to do teacher training, it's great to have lots of services and so forth, when we can't afford it, but when we can't, we need to have the teacher in the classroom. I also understand that with the school improvement officers or whatever we call them, you cannot have all of the superintendents reporting directly to the superintendent. So we're cutting that down, but we still need them. This issue of the resource teachers, of which there are twenty-four, and that provides, this is on the option B chart, and I'm sure they provide great and valuable services, but I don't know if we can afford to do that. My calculation is that's about two point four million dollars. So just to be outrageous, what if we just completely eliminated those positions? What would happen?
While they're thinking about it, I can tell you what-
Can we, can we hear from staff? I'd really would like to hear from staff.
Well, each board member has a chance to speak as well, Catherine.
But he asked a question and I, I don't want to show the Jackson version of this.
Well, you're gonna get the Sheila Jackson, I get a chance to speak, thank you very much. And the reason that we have resource teachers that go out to the schools is because we would love it if all of our principals knew all of our subjects in detail enough to go in and help a teacher when they needed it. Unfortunately, we don't. We have to have people that are available, that when teachers, especially new teachers, I'm calling on a class model to them or they need support, that they're able to get the support. I think what the new one does is it now, if the, if the SIO goes out with her team or his team or whomever, they have that person on there so they can respond to the school more quickly. The question becomes for us, the bigger picture is, how are our teachers getting the necessary training and skills they need to move forward? And now we would love it also if the kids, if the teachers came from the universities ready to teach reading, ready to teach math, but I'm sure the staff can take it, they don't come that way.
But remember, we claim them all as highly qualified teachers.
We need to get an answer to Dr. Evans' question.
My question is, I, I'm not questioning the, the value of this. I'm, we're looking at things, can we not do them for the next, for the next year or two and, and still survive?
What would happen?
You know, if over the next year.
What would be, we're district and program improvement, so what, what's, what are the ramifications?
I think trustee Jackson just shared with you, the ramifications is we're continuing to move further and further along the pipeline of being a district in improvement. If you take away the resources, the people who are out there researching the best practices and being able to present it to teachers, you won't, you won't have a professional development department. You could reduce these numbers, but like I said, it's still gonna have an impact, impact on achievement, but at the end of the day, you're consolidating departments, the area superintendents would not have a resource or anyone to tap into when they go out looking at data director, we would not have anyone that continues to provide the training for data director. The continuation of the I-21 implementation. These resource teachers are trained in all of the initiatives that we have going on currently in the district, so they would be responsible for taking it out to the school site. So if you remove all twenty-five of them, then you would be left with the area superintendents being responsible for all professional development.
Okay, and so what you're saying, the impact would be that the school would fall further into the program, program improvement pit? And so there are twenty-four and then I made the outrageous statement with zero, there also are numbers, there's numbers in between such as six or twelve.
How can we say that we, how can we say that the district won't fall into a pit because we're losing like eighty million dollars? Somehow we gotta make some decisions and if we believe that we'll continue with the high performance that we have with a reduction in eighty million dollars, then we've been wasting a whole lot of money, which a lot of our critics are saying anyway.
The issue is getting by.
You know, in a crisis, I, I understand your issues. I mean, I don't disagree that, that maintaining a way for staff to improve itself is a very valuable thing. Under circumstances of survival, I'm not sure that's the case. I mean, I agree that everything we're gonna do is gonna have some adverse effect on the performance of the school district and that's true probably across the state, but the argument is, how many school districts are gonna survive the budget crisis and are we gonna be one of them?
Okay, we're gonna need to do this in a little bit more orderly fashion, so Miss Nakamura is next.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Anderson. Yeah, I, I know that Los Angeles eliminated their department a couple of years ago and pretty much just wiped it out and I know that they, within six months, came back, scurrying back and had to rebuild it all, once they found out what it actually meant and the impact that it was having. It was in very short order and, you know, it, I'm not sure, what I don't know is the actual, you know, specifics of that. I mean, those who don't understand history are doomed to repeat it. So we have a piece of history in the Los Angeles school district of what happens when a school district does this, but I'm not exactly sure what that collapse meant and we are in a crisis in trying to figure this out. I think it is hard for the public to understand, how can we continue this professional development when we have, you know, teachers that are ostensibly certified and credentialed, but what I think the public sometimes fails to understand or just can't understand is that there is, you know, we have such a diverse population, of such a challenging range of students and the program improvement is very, it's very difficult to dig your way out of it and keeping teachers motivated and, and working and thinking expansively about what they can do for their classroom, teachers are so isolated inside their individual classrooms. They go in, they close the door and it's very easy to, to just, I think, sort of slow down and to stop what they're doing. And what this does is sort of open that door up and get them engaged in thinking about how to move this forward, how, how they can be more effective teachers and what are some of the techniques that are out there. I don't know that the public quite buys that, but I do know, as I said, LA eliminated this and they came back, and it probably costs more to rebuild the whole thing again and find the people and go through the human resources and to rebuild the entire department. So my caution is, before we do that, let's not throw caution to the wind. I'd, I'd like to, to find out more about what this would mean. I do, I think it's a valuable resource, particularly in science and math, where I think we've got, you know, we don't have as much strength as we need, but, you know, I would say every department, you know, adds value as far as these resource teachers are concerned. And we've already seen a reduction in the reorganization. We've already, this is, one of the, I think people have trouble understanding the scale and the size of this school district over and over again. It's, it's, that's really not a lot of people when you consider the size of all of this and the individual teachers that they have to address, again, thinking of the, you know, span of control, which we've picked up from Mr. Kova, it's not my favorite term, but I need to find some other business sounding term that gets to, you can only manage so many people.
Proper support.
Proper support, there you go, that's a good, span of control. No, no, no.
But what we're trying to do is provide support.
Yeah, provide support, proper support, you know? Something that sounds, it's a little more academically friendly here, so, but, you know, provide the proper support for, for, for our teachers.
Okay, Mr. Kova?
With an eye to your time, board members, let me just say this, I think we wanna explore, provide greater detail on that option B, that K-12. And I think that we recognize and appreciate what Dr. Evans was saying, this model will come back to you on, this model reflects, we've already had twenty-four reductions and we would like to show you where the content, resource, teacher support to the areas is viable. It's a model that I recall a couple of years ago when I first joined the district that was working at that time. It could have used some adjustments, but it was working, so we'd like to do that. I think if I could go back to your central office piece, I think I understand where you were. We answered the question, five percent across the board, every department. Okay, that was, John DeBeck brought up a different approach to it. We can go back and try, now we only had the five days from, you know, last Wednesday to today, basically, or six days, to try and, and figure out what that number was. You saw some zeros up there with no FTE. Let's validate that, those are clean, straightforward. Understand impact though, most importantly, and determine what it is we could do. But there were certain departments that, you know, you translated into eight FTE in district relations, ten FTE in finance. So we'll try to, again, because we needed to get to this point in time, let's clean that up and see where we are, net of any overlap. that up and see where we are, net of any overlap.
Line 82 and line 81 and 82 are the same. Is that because of just estimates? I wouldn't expect them to be the same, but they are the same, so.
Right, yeah.
You did check it twice? Okay, very good.
Well, that's interesting.
Do we, may I, may I have the next turn, I guess? No?
Please.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Yeah, I'd like to go back to item 11. And I was, as I said, I was up in Sacramento with the PTA this weekend, so if this has already been given to us, and somewhere hidden in the voluminous amount of paper that we have been given on this, I mean, and the various copies of the voluminous amounts of the paper, if it's already been given, please forgive me. So, line 11, instructional materials support services, and I suspect it has, because I've asked this question already. You know, I'm very concerned about textbooks, and I know that the non-renewal of textbooks is something that everyone, you know, is, it sounds like it's okay. But we're in this for the long haul, as far as I'm concerned. I think it's, I'm not hearing anything up in Sacramento this weekend that makes me think the economy is getting any better, or that people expect next year, or even the year after that, the money's gonna come flooding back in. And I'm worried about being not renewing textbooks that we really absolutely need. And I know that this, line 11, instructional support, materials support services, you know, I want, I believe that includes textbooks, that non-renewal of textbooks, correct?
No, 20 million bucks is our annual textbook renewal cost.
Drew just said yes, so I'm assuming that it is. Do we have that breakdown?
Ms. Nakamura, if we could ask Drew Rollins?
Mr. Rollins, yeah.
He's done the dissection of this area.
Thank you, I'd appreciate it. And if there's a piece of paper, because I need more paper, I'd be happy to read it.
There is a piece of paper in your packet.
Of course.
Line 11, page 1, where we did try to clarify where we are with instructional resources and materials.
Okay.
Line what?
Line 11, page 1.
Line 11, page 1.
I got it.
And the word books isn't in here anywhere.
Instructional materials is in there, and that's to capture books and other media.
Page 11?
Books.
Line 11, page 1. Line 11, page 1 in the packet, towards the front, I believe, yeah.
So that's books, and like, is that like the phos-science kits or something? Or when you say other materials, consumables? I love the language we use in academics. It's not schools, they're sites. It's not books, it's instructional materials.
Yes, it's books, but it's not just books. It's also, I believe with an eye to the future, that it could be software, or, you know, that type of thing as well.
Is that included textbook adoptions?
The restricted portion of it, which you see on page 2, line 11, shows $6.8 million, which is the lottery proceeds currently held by the district.
Okay, but I guess I wanna, our annual budget for textbook replacement is far more than this amount.
Correct.
Okay, so that this is not textbooks, and the number is mainly materials that relate to textbooks, but it isn't the full issue of textbook adoptions. It is not, for example, depriving kids of replaced textbooks on a schedule.
You know, we didn't adopt last year, we didn't adopt the AP biology textbook. We didn't adopt, we didn't adopt the economics textbook. We didn't, you know, there are specific textbooks that we chose not to adopt, and, you know, as I have said repeatedly over again, the irony of our students, you know, of us deciding that they don't need economics.
What I'm trying to get at, and I don't argue with you about what the adoption was, I'm saying on this number here, line 11, does not include whether or not we adopt books.
You know, Mr. DeBeck, I think staff is saying that it does.
It does. It says math K-5, Spanish, French 3-4, high school ESL, and textbooks for new AP course offerings. It's there, line 11, page 2.
I got line 11, okay, there it is. So that's the, so we're not gonna do it for math, we're not gonna do it for Spanish, we're not gonna do it.
No.
Those are the.
So these are the ones that we're going to be adopting? What aren't we adopting?
Because they go in cycles, and please educate the board on the cycles that we adopted.
And perhaps if Chris Woller comes up, he can, I mean, he's the expert in the area. We do have in the packet on page 5.
Excuse me for a minute. Okay, we didn't adopt some textbooks last year, am I correct?
You are, we adopted, if you look at page 5.
No, just cleanly, there were some textbooks we did not adopt, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. So I don't think the condescension is necessary. I understand textbook adoptions, and I certainly understand that they are done in cycles. And I also understand that when you skip that cycle, that you skip it for a very, very long time. And that our students are not gonna have a new economics textbook, which means that they're going to miss this entire budget crisis, which means they don't even have the euro in the textbook that they've got right now. So what textbooks are our kids not, what kind of knowledge and intelligence is our kids not going to be getting this year?
Well, actually, one of the documents that Drew has in the packet lists the courses that we missed, that you guys didn't wanna go forward with last year because of the budget crisis.
Right.
And there's about 10 of them, and they're on.
Where?
Line 11, page 5, so just continue flipping. And I do have to, there is, four errors shaded. One of those is my mistake, the AP statistics should not be shaded. It just went past it. There it is.
Oh, 'cause they, again, the irony of this, AP statistics, and here we are up here. Okay, good.
The, so these are the items that were not adopted based on last year's committee recommendations. What is in your packet before you is, and you saw it on page 2, was recommending that you do continue with adoptions of math K through 5, Spanish and French 3-4, high school ESL workbooks, and textbooks for new AP course offerings. That about spends the lottery proceeds that are currently held by the district.
Okay, so we're going to go through, so the only textbooks that our kids are going to be doing without is contemporary voices, because, you know, we, contemporary voices, we, I'm sorry, it's just I can't help the irony of that. But it's these textbooks here that are on page 11, line 11, page 5?
Yeah.
Okay, so all of these are the ones that we missed last year, but we're going to adopt this math K-5, so where there aren't any textbooks this year that we're skipping out on.
Well, there's quite a few courses that haven't moved forward because we did not go through the evaluation process this year because of the reduction in the.
So you made the decision for us?
No, but the budget was swept for the O-9-10 evaluation monies that John DeBeck referred to.
Okay, so that's my question, is what are we not, I mean, this is a nice little list. What are we, you know, writer's workshop?
Well, I can get you that information. That, you know, on schedule, there was approximately 20 courses scheduled for evaluation in O-10-11. These are the courses that were evaluated for O-9-10 in the past. So those are ready to go.
These are ready to go?
Those are ready to go because they've been recommended by committee.
Are we, but we're not purchasing these, right?
Not without your approval, but there is funding available with the 1.4 reduction that's identified. There's still funding available.
To get at these books.
To move forward with the math K-5, and the Spanish 3-4 and French 3-4, to try to meet the AG requirements of the World League.
But not, I don't know why this is so hard. I can't, I mean, I just want a flat list of books from last year that we're not, our kids aren't going to get, and I want a flat list of books that, for next year, our kids aren't going to get. And does the budget?
I'd be glad to get that, I can get that for you.
You know, and what are our students not learning? You know, what are we sacrificing on their behalf when we say this? That's what drives me crazy about this, is that it's not clear. And, yeah, I really want a very clear, flat list of exactly what it is, what decisions we are making on behalf of our students.
Okay, I can have that for you.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't, you know, I don't want it buried in some really, you know.
I don't want it buried.
Okay, if you could, thank you.
Okay, if we're ready to move on to.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, the big issue I think we need to focus on is, where do we, if we balance the budget through solutions that include reductions in certificated FTEs, what is the impact on class size of those reductions? And I know that your answer to that is, well, depends on what the reductions are. The question I think that I would have to begin that, you know, analysis is, within our contractual obligations, where, if anywhere, is there room to increase class size, K through 12?
I think from a finance perspective, we've got a schedule. I'm not sure if it's a schedule that Amy has, that she can share with the board, but I can make copies of it if needed.
So in our contract, if I could just kind of point out, on page 57 of the contract, it talks about what our limits are. And right now, our recommendation for maintaining class size followed those limits for grades 4 through 12. The area where we had room to adjust based on the contract is in areas in grades K through 3. The contract actually will go to 29, 29.13 in K through 3. But of course, you also have penalties of going every student above the current 24 that you have.
Yeah, and in fact, we're introducing legislation that would increase those penalties above 24 and a half. So maybe the question is, if we wanna stay within this, you know, 24, 24 and a half to 1, is there room based on what our current enrollment is in those class sizes?
So, so right now, what we took is the demographer's projections of, for next year, and we, you know, his projections are that we're gonna basically have, we're gonna need 4,153 FTE if we follow his projections, which is a decline of enrollment by 150 or so students. So we, when we did our calculations, we did them right to the edge, you know, right to the contract formula for grades 4 through 12. When you look at class size average reports, you know, after the school year starts, you're gonna see lower numbers. We have a practice that we've put in place in the district where the fifth week of school, we traditionally will not pull out a teacher from a school if the class enrollment drops. And that's, the theory behind that was to preserve the integrity of the students, you know, not having to have a different teacher now, you know, two months into the school year. But that's where you see the changes this far along in a school year, where things may have adjusted. But for next year, which is what we projected, we based it on Roy's numbers, the demographer, and we're right at the edge of that.
Just to clarify that one point, I just, we have these, the formula, allocation formula for, I'm talking 4th grade to 12th grade.
Right.
The calculations were made at the maximum of what the contract allows. So we don't have any more room to increase class size 4 to 12 without negotiating that with the unions. Okay, there's not like a wiggle room of one more student or anything like that, because you've already done it to the max.
We've already done to the max. That's what the priority committee took into consideration.
So then, K to 3, is, Darrell, is your sense that right now, we are in fact today below 24 to 1 class size in K to 3 on average?
We have some averages that are below, we have some that are right at it, and we have some that are above it. And I've got an average, I do have a report that was ran as of January 15th, and the summary for K to 3, just a second.
Isn't part of the problem the fact that parents inexplicably refuse to put their children neatly into schools?
Yes. The district-wide average, and this is, you know, when you run it across the whole district, this is all the elementers combined, the K to 3 average currently is 21.72. But, you know, you're gonna, you have a couple of situations here. You've got a couple of small school, this is, you know, without any of those considerations, pulled out some specialized schools that are included in this data. But you also have that model that we followed, that after the fifth week of school, if the enrollment, for example, at a particular school dropped below, you know, one or two or even three students, we didn't pull the teacher out of the school. And that's what happens at the, you know, fifth, sixth week, all the way up into January.
Sure.
So that, I mean, to adjust to this number, that practice, you know, would have to be looked at.
Add teachers.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I mean, we certainly don't wanna adjust that practice. We certainly don't wanna be in a position that, you know.
I mean, we're disrupting their learning, yeah.
Teachers around. I guess the question is, if we're currently on average at, you know, 22, but, sorry, but that I know includes the lower class size in the 25 schools.
Yeah, it does.
And those types of things. But if we, if we factored all that in together, and let's say today, we're at, you know, 23 to 1 on average, as of now, could we, in going forward into 10-11, imagine reducing certificated FTEs and still stay below 24 to 1 on average? I think that's, do you understand the question?
Yeah, I understand the question. And I think it's gonna, it's gonna be on a school-by-school basis, and looking, this is where the problem comes in, because then it gets down to, this school may have an issue with, you know, trying to avoid a combination class, which is some of the other reasons why you have these lower numbers in some cases. And I think, you know, if we took out the factor, and what I'd like to do is go back and take out the factor of the 25 schools that have the 1 to 15 applied to them, and the other circumstances, and get this number, I could probably get this before the next meeting tonight. I think we're, what we, what the team budgeted for, though, for next year, was a 24 to 1 number in K through 3.
Yes.
Not what we currently have this year. What we took was the projections from the demographer and said, that's what we're budgeting to.
Okay.
We also did run the class size scenarios of adding one kid, two kids, all the way up to 29. And the impact penalty, there are 10%, 20%, and 30%. So we do have an analysis of what the savings would be, and the certificated teacher reduction would be, depending on how many, with the class size ones. It's gotta be right on the box.
I'm not interested in doing that. I appreciate that you've got, you've got the analysis.
Just, and I know I've, you've tried to answer this, and I've asked it a million different ways and so forth, because it's an unknown in terms of all these variables with particular kinds of service and everything. But it seems that the answer is, the ballpark sort of answer is, if there are, if there's approximately a reduction of 200 certificated FTE, that it looks like that could be done without increasing class size. Correct? I'm saying that, I said for it, because, you know, as opposed to 30, or as opposed to 600, or whatever, that within a couple hundred, not knowing all the details, but it looks like it might be in the range of moving non-classroom teachers into classroom and so forth, that it could be accommodated without increasing class size.
Correct, but basically what would happen is that those staff members that get reduced from whatever area they're in, they would be pushed into a classroom. But what may end up happening is that the other end is that if we don't have enough classrooms for everyone, then that's what may cause an overstaffing situation, and then that would mean that you're looking at options with regards to personnel action.
No, I understand that, and that's what I'm saying. I'm going on the assumption, at the other end, that there is a personnel action that results in 200 less positions. And the idea of that being accomplishable within, you know, without increasing class size. If we, you know, the math problem is, if at the end, there are 200 positions reduced, that it still has not affected class size.
Right, the different scenarios that Darrell and I looked at, it would indicate that, yes, you can definitely do that, because we've already assumed going up to that limit. And again, the only possibility is those 25 schools that have the 15 to 1 in K to And again, the only possibility is those 25 schools that have the 15 to one in K two, where perhaps you could increase. But even with that analysis, you still are looking at some teachers being over. But you could accommodate non-classroom teachers perhaps being placed in classrooms. And maintaining class size.
Okay.
It's 17 to one, right? It's not 15 to one?
16.5.
16.5.
We've got a couple of things. This is really briefly on the issue of the parent programs and so forth, just, and I, that, because it's such a minuscule amount in terms of the savings from the restricted fund, and I think along the lines of Mr. DeBeck was saying about making program changes in the midst of budget cuts and so forth is not desirable. I certainly support the idea of moving parenting programs out to the sites and decentral, and that's a type program that to me, it seems very good to be decentralized. I just don't think that should be part of the rushed budget process, and we can look at that afterwards, rather than trying to get $44,000 at this point and do it in a very methodical way.
Dr. Evans, we agree with you, and we've, I decided to pull that item for further discussion and review and assessment with the DAC, and ensure that we're on the mark for what we want to do, and what we need to do.
Okay, and then the other point of discussion has to do with OCIL as far as complete elimination versus reduction in the program. And the other variable that I introduced was in terms of doing what the other districts, I wasn't talking that long, what the other districts do in terms, around the county in terms of charging those who have the ability to pay as another way to further reduce the district cost. And I know Mr. Marky was working on it.
Good morning, everybody. I had an opportunity to work quite closely with the OCIL principals. We had about a half a dozen sessions where we discussed the options, and really, we came from a position where it doesn't have to be all on or all off. And in regard to the Camp Palomar program, which we think is probably the crown jewel in this system, we think that we can make some modest cuts to that program, preserve it largely intact. The other two programs, the Old Town program in Balboa Park, would shift from a five-day program to a two-day program at Old Town and a three-day possible program over at Balboa Park, and we would save somewhere around $2 million out of the about 5.7 million or so that's in that entire program. The other school districts in the region that do charge students pay in the neighborhood of about $250 for various programs. Now, you know, I'm not sure if that's a direct linear comparison to what we would charge at this site, but that's about the range of contributions. The transportation up to Palomar is about $70 per student over that period of time, and if you cut back the days up there, you really don't save too much money in transportation because it's one up and one back. The other ones, you save quite a bit of money in transportation because you go to a two-day program, which are picking up students, dropping them off, two days versus five days.
Your recommended plans, does that include cutting days at Palomar?
No, sir. One of the options is at Palomar, however, is to go from a four-day program to a 3.5. The children might show up after lunch and instead of in the morning, which you miss an orientation and a lunch, and you save a little bit of money that way. But the team really did come close together, came together, had a lot of dialogue, and thought they could get, preserve the core of those programs with that two-day, three-day, and three-and-a-half-day model.
Ms. Nakamura.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I really appreciate the efforts to save this. This program is, you know, many, I think all five of us have said over and over again, is important. You know, but I do have a problem with charging for it, and I'll tell you why. It's, I know that there are other school districts that do that, and, you know, that's an individual decision for the school districts. But we already have so many trips that our kids participate that they pay for. And when I was up in Sacramento, there were schoolchildren, you know, they are probably not on the Sacramento trip, but it reminded me of when I went up with my student, you know, to Sacramento, and we paid for that trip. There were kids who didn't get to go on that trip. They weren't free and reduced lunch, but their parents were in a tight spot at that time, and they couldn't go. The Marine Classroom, the floating Marine Classroom trip, there were kids that didn't get to go. You know, Star of India, spending the night on the Star of India, which is a phenomenal, phenomenal experience. And, you know, we do that already. I think that the beauty of the, of Camp Palomar is that that really is one thing that we do for our children, where everybody gets to go. And it's tremendously important. It levels the playing field. You're up in the mountains, and, you know, it, again, also, with an, I don't mean disrespect for Old Town or Balboa Park, because I also believe that it's important that our children have that exposure to these, the living history in California, and our beautiful museums, and, you know, in Balboa Park. And it's simply true, particularly in these economic times, that there are more and more families that are going to make decisions, that that's something I can't afford for my child right now. If there was ever a time when we needed to preserve some little piece, because I'm sure all of the other programs that we're talking about, the field trips are going to go to the wayside too, and are not going to be occurring anymore. And they are phenomenally helpful in educating our children, you know, and broadening their spans. I'd also, on behalf of the, I think with the incident at UCSD, that we saw this last week with regard to the students and their, just really, you know, unacceptable behavior, that, you know, intelligent, educated, our very brightest at a university in this city could still do something so outrageously unacceptable, indicates to me that we've got a long, long way to go in race and human relations and in this city. And undercutting any part of that program through, whether it's Camp Palomar, or Balboa Park, or the, you know, Old Town program, I think is a detriment to our students. And, you know, I would hope that any student that had been through these programs would not have done with those kids that UCSD did, which they will regret for the rest of their lives. I mean, they've got a heavy label on them now that's going to be difficult to overcome. So.
Any other questions on the OCIL?
Sure. First of all, you know, I'd like to offer something that wasn't even on here, which is a single administrator for the Balboa Park and Old Town programs as a savings, because there's definitely, the staff there is on autopilot, and they've been doing it for a long time. I don't think they need that direct supervision all the time. So moving a person back and forth to provide that, and having some site authority to be the master teacher for the Civic Center Acts, which requires somebody to be in charge, is okay for me. The cutting of the program to two days in both cases, for Balboa Park and Old Town, I'm not at all in favor of. I'm not, I think these programs require the time to deliver the services that they do. I mean, it's not like they're sitting around twiddling their thumbs for three days already. There's a contribution, an educational contribution that goes on. And if you're saying, well, we're going to save the, okay, the race, human relations portion of it probably takes two days, and the rest of the benefit of the program will probably go down the drain, or something. My personal view is, that's not acceptable to me. But one of the things, ways that I think is inherent in these programs is the fact that the teachers don't follow their kids. So what we've got is, if you add up all these weeks, and one week in the fifth grade, one week in the fourth grade, and one week in the sixth grade, where the teachers who have the kids are double counted, because you've got teachers up in Palomar teaching the kids, and they've got the people down in the schools that aren't, who are out with kids. Now, we've used in the past, used this for staff development, but I bet you there's other ways we could use that. Or we could figure out a way to, I mean, there's a lot of pay going out there. It's one full week of a certified teacher without kids. Where's, is there a savings there? I think there is. But let's go back to the cut. If you say you're cutting the work week at, the work days in the week at Balboa Park and Old Town, I think you're going to have attrition from that program, from the talented people that do it, because they have bumping rights. They have the right to go back to classrooms. They came from somewhere, and they're all permanent experienced teachers. So that's a, you know, I'd say you're going to have, what you're saying is, oh, if you want to teach in Balboa Park or Old Town, it's okay if you take a three-fifths cut in salary. But these are tenured permanent teachers, and I don't think they're going to do it. You know, I still go back to the same issue that I've had from the get-go. The real savings over our budget will be across-the-board salary savings. If we're starting to cut programs, we're going to hurt kids. I'm done. Just on time.
Well, thank you, Mr. DeBeck, for your insight. The delivery of educational content is done by both classified and unclassified workers there. And the preponderance of the cuts will not be in the teachers, it would be in the adjustment of the teaching assistants and so forth. However modest at Palomar, they're quite significant at the other sites. So there is representative cuts in both classified and unclassified, or credentialed and non-credentialed staff. The program at Old Town, what Ms. Sheminsky has forwarded was an opinion that she could deliver the core of her program, with the exception of a day hiking and a trip to the Sarah Museum in two days. And we would do this in conjunction with additional classroom work. The students would be prepared in the classroom prior to arrival at the site. And a lot of that preparation that you would do, that's done on the site, would be shifted in that same week into the classroom, so that when the students came up for their participative program, they'd be better prepared. At Balboa, the cutbacks would be the elimination of some other museums. The most popular over there for the students, as I understand it, are the Technology Areas, the Air and Space Museum. They like to go to the Science Museum and the trip to the zoo. And then they would pare back some of the other visits. At Palomar, they would give up lunch and orientation. So that's a very modest change. The team was very well aware that you can't do more with less. But they were also convinced that a lot of the content could be delivered in the classroom. So you would not give up much in terms of that. You'd have to have a closer collaboration with the school sites.
Okay. When you're faced with a possibility of losing your entire program, you're bound to come up with suggestions of ways to, you know, make it look like you could still do it. But I don't think that's valid. I think this is a coercive kind of environment, and I think the program, if the regular teachers weren't preparing the kids for their outdoor experiences or for their Balboa Park experiences, they missed the point anyway. So that, that should have been going on already. Now, when they come to this, and I've been there, and every one of these, including Palomar, I've visited these programs in my career, and I can tell you, these programs are filled with activities. They're not sitting around. And so if you're going to cut three days out of Old Town, you're going to cut instruction. It's California, it's California history, it's where it started. It is also a case where kids are mixed from different schools, and it contributes to their understanding of the different kinds of people in our society. So I don't think that, that whole, you know, including respect for the Indian culture of our community and a bunch of other stuff. So this is not something you can just dispense with tomorrow, and it can't be replaced by somebody over at Loma Portal teaching kids about California history. It's a different kind of experience. So I'm not going to support the cuts to these programs. I mean, it may be popular with the board, or maybe be popular with people whose kids missed it. But the issue is, this is a valuable instructional program, and I'd rather pay before I ever did this.
Okay, any, yeah, Dr. Evans? Yeah, anything else on the OCIL reduction? Okay. Any other issues that board members have? The question I have is, so.
Oh, I did, I did, I'm sorry. Can I have one more question? You know, that's something that we have, we have this freezing Stefan column. Is that something that we can do without negotiations? We can't, can we? We have to negotiate?
No, that's negotiable.
It's negotiable, that's what I thought, okay.
So James, the second interim report will include an update on actuals through January 31st?
Yes, sir. It'll include July 1 through December 31st actuals, and then projections going forward for January through the rest of the fiscal year, which is June 30th.
Okay. And you anticipate that it'll take you the next two weeks to be able to?
Yeah, we've got, we've been working on it, of course. One of the things that we don't have for 10-11 would be any items that are going to be considered for reduction to balance the $86 million shortfall. So when that does get approved, then we'll put it in the system to show as a balanced budget, and send that off to you, I think on the March 9th for approval, and then we'll send it to the county office.
Okay. And is it too early? I know that, you know, Amy pointed to, you know, the potential of, you know, $4 million and less increase in the general fund contribution to special ed. Is it too early to look at it? Is the trend moving backwards or forwards in terms of the analysis moving up to?
Yeah, I actually think, I don't think we're moving backward, meaning we're spending more, because we've had a pretty tight lid on that. So I think we're pretty close. I think we're going to come in pretty close to what we projected in the first interim. You'll see a little bit of a switch based on, previously, you added how we managed 116 teachers on the first interim, and then anything we do with those items that could be considered a funding cliff perspective for the out year, not 10-11, but 11-12. So based on what we decide to do with that information, then you could see some of the items differentiate. But for 9-10, I think we're holding pretty close to what we projected.
I had a question. There's, and this is, I think I can talk about this in open session. Mr. Brucie? With regard to, I'm wondering about class size. Is there a way that we can adjust class size K through three, and this is just maybe a point of curiosity, where our more experienced seniors can have a larger class size, seniors, our more experienced teachers can have a larger class size than our brand-new teachers, so that a new teacher would get a 20 to one class size, and, you know, somebody that's got, after, you know, three years, you get a little bit larger. You know, it takes time to learn how to manage children because they are rambunctious, so. Is that at all anything anyone has ever done? Is that something that we could consider, or?
Well, I haven't heard of any district ever doing that. It's certainly something that, there aren't, there wouldn't be any legal barriers to it, you know, just on a general level. But the, I think as implementing that operationally, you'd be looking at massive movement of teachers from school to school, and so it would raise issues. There are restrictions in our contract on involuntary movement of teachers from one school to another. So I don't think it's a, it's something that is, well, I'm positive it's something, it's something that would need to be negotiated.
Okay.
And it would be unprecedented from my experience.
I guess that's really my question. It's just my question. I just, I know that we're taking away the beginning, you know, we're discussing, one of the things on the table is the beginning, a lot of beginning teacher support. And I know that when you walk into a classroom, obviously, you know, that, you know, it can be a little overwhelming, and having fewer teachers in those earlier years might be something that would be helpful. But if it's got to be negotiable, and you say that operationally it's difficult, I'm not sure I'm buying the operational thing. But, you know, I'd want to take a closer look at that. But it was just an idea that I had as a way of helping our less experienced teachers, instead of throwing them into the deep end, you know, bringing it back by a few, you know, just having, that if you're a new teacher, one of the ways we can support you is by easing you in a little bit on class size. And I thought that was a reasonable idea, but.
Yeah, and I think if we're, if we're butted up against the 24 to one district-wide, and then you have the operational issue at a particular school site, say you have one new teacher at grade one, and you put 20 in that class, it makes, it raises the possibility of bumping it above the 24.
I'm just trying to find a way to support our younger teachers. And it is, we lose so many of them because they're, it's just overwhelming those first few years. And, you know, we lose a lot of them. And it's, they burn out, and they, and we could say, well, you're going to have to be hard-boiled to stay in this business. But I think we lose a lot of very, you know, sensitive people, unfortunately. So that's my question. Thank you.
Mr. Coben?
President Barrera. About 20 minutes or 18 minutes, I didn't know if the board. I didn't know if the board members wanted to field any more questions for the cabinet to respond to. I know that we've got a lot of information here, and we're going to wrap up, so I just open it up to you.
Right. Dr. Evans?
I just wanted to comment more to board members. We need to solve for about $79 million. I'm in favor of $7 million worth of cuts, and not in favor of the other 72 million. However, we have to solve for 79 million. The reason I am saying this is...
I did the same math. That was, yeah.
The reason I'm saying this is to be responsible, it's very easy for me and everyone else to say that, we shouldn't cut that, we shouldn't cut that, and we shouldn't cut that.
Exactly.
And yet we have to solve for 79 million. And I think that's what's important, that each of us individually come up with how we would do that. Because otherwise, it's very easy to sit back and vote against certain cuts. And so we have to say, these are the program cuts we're going to make, these are the staffing reductions that we are recommending. And I know Mr. DeBeck responded right away, and he was very clear on what his would be, which would be through salary rather than making any of these cuts that we've made here. I think my calculation, that would come out to about a 12% salary reduction. But at the same time, that's easy to criticize, but that's one solution. We each need to come up with $79 million and then compare what we come up with.
Well, if I, again, I think what, part of the difficulty that I think the audience would have, I certainly would have, is that, you know, we can't make salary reductions without negotiations and without, you know, agreement from our labor unions by and large. There are some people that we could cut their salaries without, but they're not enough to certainly bridge the gap. And we have to be cognizant and aware and sensitive to the fact that these are people that, you know, deserve the salaries they're getting right now. And they have other choices to go somewhere else if we slash them, you know, too deeply. We can't, we can't put that much burden on one particular group of people. But my trouble with this is trying to, I don't know what those salary agreements are going to be or if we're going to get any of them. I don't know if the economy is going to approve. I don't know if the class size reduction bill will pass. But we have to, because of the second interim report, make these decisions right now. The state of California is going to make us, and they won't allow us to bring any of the salary in.
Non-negotiable items.
Non-negotiable items. And we don't know about the bill, and we don't know about the economy, and we don't know, but we've got to make these decisions right now. So you're right. I've found about, you know, there were, there were a few things that I found, okay, if I have to, we can cut these. But I didn't find anything, I mean, they were, I've labeled some of my stuff unthinkable. I mean, it's just unthinkable that we would do this. But we're forced to think about it, and we're forced to take action as a holding pattern of sorts. It's not a final decision on the budget. And I think once people find out what our decisions would be, it's going to send shockwaves through the community, because there's certainly things that I can't, I can't, I mean, I have to send something into the state, but, you know, we have to do this. Otherwise, they freeze our bank accounts and they take action, and they're, I mean, we're really in a terribly untenable position. I'd like to, you know, I was, when I was up in Sacramento this weekend, you know, I want to, I don't know when to say this, but I have to share this with all of you, and it, it's, I think it's important for us. And, Chris, I'm sorry that I was so upset about textbooks. The one addiction that I have are books, and I really feel strongly about that. So I apologize, I spoke so strongly to you, because I'm about to contradict what I, my behavior, my own behavior. And that is, Scott Plotkin from the California School Boards Association came and spoke to the PTA and talked with us about, you know, the members who had come up there statewide. Two school board members have attempted suicide over, in the state of California, over this budget crisis. Fortunately, they weren't successful. And I know of two members, two staff members of legislators, and I won't name the legislators, whose aides have passed away due to, obviously, an underlying health concern, but they could be identified as were being related to stress. So, Chris, I am sorry. I apologize. And I would really encourage everyone to, you know, let's try and be a little kinder and gentler with each other, myself most especially included, because we are all under extraordinarily difficult, difficult. And I want to thank the staff for all of the work that they've done on this. And we're trying up here, the five of us, as best as being just flesh and blood and humble human beings ourselves, you know, we're trying to make these decisions too. Okay?
Okay. If I could, I think I said December 31st for actuals, it's January 31st. Sorry.
All right. We will break. We've got a closed session at 11 o'clock and back here at 2 o'clock for our regular board meeting.